I think we need to call the meeting to order. Kathy, would you take your seat?
Thank you. It's a little past eight thirty, so we'll call the meeting for Tuesday, April fifteenth, to order. And the agenda is before us. We have a couple of commissioners that are absent today for medical reasons, and we wish them well. And with the rest of us, we'll try to do the business before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Do we have a change on one thing that's...
Mr. Chair?
First thing?
There will be a couple items under, one under each presenter, but if we could have them, ask to remove them when they present?
Will they come up?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Has been a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say nay? Motion carried. Okay, citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens here that wish to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Well, he must be here for an agenda item. Nice to have him room full here. Approval of the minutes for March eighteenth and twenty-fifth meetings. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the minutes for March eighteenth and twenty-fifth. Any discussion on that motion? Anyone who have a question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say nay? Motion carried. Approved payment of bills and vouchers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to pay the bills and vouchers. Any discussion on that motion? If none, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say nay? Motion carried. Okay, our eight-thirty-five, we're back on schedule here. Eight-thirty-five item is the drug court update. Michelle? Judge, I'm sorry, I shouldn't call you Michelle. Judge Lawson.
You should call me Michelle. Thank you for calling me Michelle.
Old habits are hard to break.
You know, one thing that happens once you become a judge, you lose your first name. Realizing my name is Michelle.
You still have it here, so.
And I think, are you here with us, Brian?
I'm here for the next one. I'd be here for this one, so.
Don told me you were gonna be here, so I thought you were here. Sorry to mean to call you out. All right, good morning. Thanks for having us here. We come every year just to give you guys an update in terms of how are drug courts doing? What are drug courts doing? Don Keltzman is our drug court coordinator. He's put together some statistics and some information, and I'm gonna turn it over to him so he can present that information to you.
I just have our annual update here, kinda just so you can see how we've done the past year and the totals that we have now in the program. So you can see from the top sheet just some of the demographic data. Currently, we've got twenty people in our program, fourteen in Clay and six in Becker. That's a little low for our averages. Usually, we have about, I'd say, twenty-five or twenty-six people at any given time, but we had several that graduated here in the last few months. We're in the process, actually, now. I think we have about six people that we're screening. That usually takes two to three weeks at least, but I imagine we'll accept a few of those and get the numbers back up to our normal averages. So you can see, too, how it breaks down in phase. We have quite a few people right now in the final phase of the program, which is the longest phase. That's six months minimum, so we'll probably have some graduations coming up. I'll send out invitations to everybody when we have those. I break them down, too. You can see, we've got right now eleven men, nine women. We've had a total since we began the program in two thousand and seven, a total of twenty-one participants that were terminated unsuccessfully from the program. But we have had now, as of today, we've had fifty-seven graduates in the program, thirty-six in Clay County and twenty-one in Becker. Of those fifty-seven graduates, fifty-six of them were employed at the time they graduated, and one of them was a full-time student. You can see, too, twenty-six graduates obtained their driver's licenses while they were in our program. Twenty-eight graduates already had their license when we took them into drug court. Everyone was, every graduate was current on child support if they had that obligation. They were all clean and sober for over a year. That's a requirement of the program. They had all completed community service projects of a minimum of fifty hours. Most of them did more than the fifty hours that are required. We had one graduate who was deceased from a prior health condition, and ten graduates have re-offended since they graduated. But I know there aren't, I didn't see any statistics as far as recidivism in Minnesota for drug offenders, but I know there are national studies, and the ones that I've seen show that, like, once you get past five years after their conviction, the reoffense rate is, like, sixty percent. So I'd say ten out of fifty-seven, that's, you know, we're doing much better than the averages for people who aren't in drug court. And then finally, they just had some graduate demographic data, so you can see how that breaks down. Thirty-eight men, nineteen women, forty-six Caucasian, seven Native American, three Hispanic, and one multiracial. And then I provided you with our budget and funding information, so you can see that it's been pretty consistent every year, the expenses and the funding. So you can see the various funding sources there at the bottom. We're pretty proud of the fact that we get funding from more sources than any problem-solving court in Minnesota. So, I mean, we have county funding, judicial district funding, state funding. We had a, last year, we were awarded a grant from the Bremmer Foundation. That will be expiring at the end of this year, but I'm fairly confident we'll be able to find other grant funds to fill that one when we need to in 2015. So we're not asking, we're asking out for the same amount we've been asking for every year since two thousand and eight from the county commission. You can see, it's twenty thousand. That's what we've asked for every year, so basically, yeah, that's about it. That's all the information.
Thank you, Don. It appears that the program was very successful. And what, I guess I'm wondering about the, you expect that you have twelve that are in the final phase, or then pretty, not very many in the other phases are, you expecting those phases are shorter so you can get enough for the final phase?
Yeah, they are a little shorter, and we'll actually be taking in probably another five or six here within the next month or two, so. But, yeah, the provisional phase is the shortest. That's just the minimum of six weeks, and then phases one and two are each three months.
Don, for that reoffender number, is that comparable to other drug courts in, at least in Minnesota?
In Minnesota, yeah. Actually, it's a little better than most of the drug courts in Minnesota.
Is it?
Yep. And more real significant to the success of the program, too, is not only the lower recidivism rate, but for those successful graduates who do not reoffend, the significant life changes that they have at the other end of the program. I mean, they reconnect with their families, they're productive members of society. Not only are they not reoffending, but they're self-sustaining and, you know, productive, happy, healthy members of society, which is just, I mean, you can't measure that in dollars. And we appreciate it when you guys come to our graduations. It really shows the county's support. The graduates just really appreciate that, and it does not go unnoticed. So thank you for that.
I appreciate you notifying us about that. I shouldn't say enjoy, but, you know, glad to be there.
No, it's okay to say you enjoy it, because it's really, it's uplifting. It's really an uplifting experience.
Well, it's a tearful experience.
It is?
It is.
It can be.
We usually say, I mean, there's only a few things, weddings, adoptions, that go on in court. I mean, we deal with a lot of negative issues, and people are usually at the bottom, and the drug court graduation is watching some of them who've been way down in the process. I mean, there's a lot of them we've seen where you look at them at the beginning, and you're thinking, I'm not sure this person's gonna make it, then when you do see them make it through, it is pretty uplifting, actually. So it's a good thing. And I think, we've talked about it before, but I think one of the best things about the program, and I know a lot of discussion is about specialty courts and the else, but we really have to continue to realize, and it's a hard court to get through. I mean, there is, one of the main things I like about it is we are constantly watching individuals or doing random testing on them, UAs, I mean, have to show that they're, you know, not just traditional probation and, you know, staying clean through that way, but, I mean, they're on them a lot, and we really are monitoring to make sure they are clean and sober. And that's, I think, just one of the best things about it, to see that they are maintaining and building that trust level, and then finally get to the point of graduation.
Just showing up for court once a week, I mean, starting out is challenging.
And like Brian said, when you say someone's been clean for a year when they're on traditional probation, what you're really saying is that they haven't been caught using for a year. But in our program, you know they're clean. I mean, they're being tested multiple times per week, they're random tests. If there's any question about the test, they're sent in for verification. I mean, it's rigorous.
Grant?
I know we've got an interested audience here. Any update on the Veterans Court, the status of that right now?
We had a meeting amongst our team about, when was that, two or three weeks ago, maybe?
Couple weeks ago, yep.
Yep, we brought our team together, and we are, we just finished our policy books. We're working on a couple of sections of that. We need to send that into the state to get our state court approval. We're going to, before we get our federal grant approval, but after we get our state court approval, we talked about starting as a pilot program like we did with our drug court, just taking maybe two participants in Clay and one in Becker before our funding is in place to kind of work out the kinks, and we did that with drug court. Well, I should say, they did that with drug court, because I can't take credit for that. I wasn't around. But what's, do we have a...
Yeah, I think we'll probably get the judicial council approval by June, I would estimate at the latest. And so, once we get that, we can start applying for grant funds.
When would you expect to have your first veteran?
Probably shortly after we get approved by the judicial council. I think the plan is to start that pilot program as soon as possible, so I think maybe even by July, we could have one more person.
But that would just be really small, just to start us out and work out the kinks while we're waiting for federal grant approval.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions, Frank, or...
Appreciate the report.
Yeah, thank you very much for sharing. Now, the budget request is for next...
That's twenty-fourteen.
Yeah. Oh, it's for this year?
For this year, yeah.
It's in the budget.
Okay. Is that something we need to act on now?
It's already been approved in the budget.
It's already, yes.
It is part of the budget, okay.
Yes, it is.
All right, so just a report for keeping, okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support. It really does mean a lot to the program, and it means a lot to us and our participants.
Thanks for the good work.
Thanks for being here. Hey, we'll keep Brian around, he's got another item on the agenda here. Okay, eight-forty-five item is a request to fill the chief assistant county attorney position.
Well, good morning, gentlemen. I, as you know and are aware, I have two chief assistants, one for criminal and one for civil. So this is not Jenny's position, C. Stank, so, you heard the point. Heidi has decided to retire and is gonna spend more time with her family and at home, and so it's a big loss for us. I mean, she's been a long-term, I know Grant's worked with her for probably over fifteen years, and she was between being a city attorney and then working with the county attorney's office, and then being my chief assistant for the last eight years. So she's just been a, I mean, she's a huge asset to the county and a big loss, but understand her desire to spend more time with the family, we're happy for her. So my request is to be able to fill her position. My intent would be to fill it from internal, and we have some very talented people within the county attorney's office, would look to advertise the chief assistant internally, but then ask to be approved to fill a assistant county attorney position if and when that comes due.
Any, there's no negative impact on your budget, then, from this, maybe?
I think it actually would be positive. Darren did a wage calculator. Probably will be about annual savings of about, annual savings of nineteen thousand, save minus payout, six thousand, so probably about a total of twelve thousand, eighty-six six, where we come in between those levels, so there should be a savings.
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion made in second to approve the filling of this position. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say nay? Motion carried.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Brian, who leads the next one here? Is that, are you gonna do that?
Well, I, I know we put under Tom, I guess we could ask the group, which, who's gonna lead off? A recognition?
Jim Beckstrom.
Okay? Jim Beckstrom, then, lead the crowd, gentlemen.
Welcome.
Good morning, Detective Commissioner.
So you have a special recognition to make today, is that...
Me, too.
Do you want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Jim Beckstrom. I'm a volunteer over at the Veteran Service Office. I spent twenty-three years in the military and didn't know where else to use some of my skills, so nobody wants to hire a guy that knows how to build a fighting position. This is Kevin Roslin. He's a twenty-seven-year retiree from the VA and took care of three states' worth of vocational rehab. And this is Jennifer Williams, the right-hand person.
She hasn't had twenty-seven years of experience.
Maybe in life.
She's just barely twenty-seven. We have a, an award for, for...
For Tom.
Tom.
What's his name?
What's his name? Not much room for a guy with that memory.
Usually, we have that trouble with his last name, but...
I won't, you, no, I can do that one.
Okay.
It's called the Braveheart Award. We're starting it, because there is a consensus among veterans of Clay County to establish an award entitled the Braveheart Award. The following guidelines are offered as criteria for those who may be nominated and chosen.
Jim's a little hoarse today, so I'm gonna take it from here. A person who may be nominated and chosen is a person who singularly has demonstrated dedication to all veterans and military personnel, provides assistance to those who will become veterans, fights to assist those who have not received their VA benefits, assists those who have experienced discrimination, shown exemplary courage and dedication in both personal and professional endeavors in order to be the best and strongest advocate possible for veterans in general, and more specifically, the veterans of Clay County. We propose the initial recipient of this award be Tom Filiutzi, Clay County Veteran Service Officer. Tom is an individual who has demonstrated these qualities and more since inception of his tenure, two thousand and six, to present. Courage is defined as the quality of mind or spirit that enables a person to face difficulty, danger, pain, et cetera, without hesitation or fear for oneself. Bravery is acting upon one's courage to follow through with action. Tom has initiated action directly for the benefit of his clients, which has at times created personal and professional risk in his interactions and advocacy between the Clay County VSO and state and federal veteran agencies. Tom has observed discriminatory attitudes and behaviors exhibited among the Northwest Minnesota VSO offices toward counterparts in affiliated North Dakota counties. This behavior restricts and inhibits proper coordination of services to all regional veterans, and Tom has individually voiced and acted in contradiction to these attitudes and practices, thus ensuring all deserving veterans within his purview are afforded the utmost respect and highest level of services possible. Tom has made significant efforts to create an office environment of the highest professional level. His efforts have resulted in an outstanding volunteer program that other state offices envy. He has also solicited and received support from local veteran groups and others to supply his office with refreshments for visiting clients, as well as the establishment of a small supply of pertinent commodities to assist transitioning and homeless or potentially homeless veterans. Tom also established a structured training program for all personnel in order to assure visiting veterans will obtain the best and most consistent information and services available. Tom is tireless in his efforts to provide service, assistance, and support to those deserving individuals in Clay County. His efforts extend well beyond his office and scheduled work hours. As a token of our appreciation for his assistance in establishing Clay County as a yellow-ribbon community, as well as the Wounded Warrior Guide Service, VSO Volunteer Program, and many other worthwhile activities, there is no one more deserving than Tom to receive this honorific. The Braveheart Award is a fully operational M-130 carbine. Due to certain policy restrictions, Tom has paid for the carbine out of his own funds since the value is beyond the acceptable threshold for gifts to county employees.
Thank you, Jennifer. This, a little bit about this carbine, it is one of those made during World War II. All six million carbines were made during World War II and started in nineteen forty-two, and the last one was made in nineteen forty-five. They were made by eleven prime contractors, only one of which had ever made weapons before. One of the really cool things about this is that the weapon, if I take parts out of this one, I can pick up any one of the other six million and put those parts in it, and it will be fully operational. There were thousands of subcontractors, and yet it all, they all fit. That's why I thought this, and we thought that this would be a very fitting award for Tom, is he makes a veteran service office that works no matter who is there.
You wanna hold it up so we can see it from this end? And I think the cameras can see it then, too. Just turn it around so we can see.
This way?
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Now, I think we bring that up. Kevin, did you have some words to say before we bring it up?
Yeah. Oh, Jim asked me to speak this morning, just a few words, and I was a little hesitant. Tilly told me that the clip was full and set on three-round verse, so here I am. As he said, I have twenty-seven years with VA at the federal level and four additional years volunteering for Tom now because I wanted to remain involved. But one of the things that always is in my heart is the saying that all gave some, some gave all. And I've tried to take that with me throughout my career and into Tom's office, and I believe that's one of the affiliations that makes me feel strongly that I'm doing the right thing by working with him and all the others who donate their time and efforts towards serving veterans of Clay County. Some specific qualities that I appreciate about Tom are his openness to working together with all elements, both private, public, federal, state, county, to bring the highest level of services to our veterans. Dedication to his mission, his personal integrity. When Tom says something, you can believe what he says, and he'll carry it through. And then also the support that he provides to everybody who works with him and under him and for him. So it's my honor to talk about Tom. I'm here. I'm in support of this award, and I'm proud to be a part of giving it to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jennifer, did you have anything else?
Yeah. I just wanna share something that happened yesterday that I think kind of demonstrates the qualities that I admire in Tom. I met with a veteran yesterday, and he, the first thing he said is, "Your service officer, Tom, is the best." And he said that to Tom also when we bumped into him in the honors room, and he said it several times. And then he told me why he thinks that, and it's because his dad, a World War II veteran who had earned a Purple Heart, fought for years to get service-connected for his hearing loss disability in another county, and was unsuccessful, and was told over and over that it wasn't the blast that left shrapnel in him, it was the farm equipment he worked with later that caused the hearing loss. And in any case, this veteran I worked with yesterday said that when they finally ended up in Tom's office, he said it took two weeks, and Tom got him service-connected at eighty percent. And sometimes I tell people that Tom's a bulldog, and I, that's a quality I admire. Tom gives a hundred and ten percent to everybody that comes in the office. He fights for our veterans as hard as he has to, and he would do anything for the veterans who come in and for volunteers, and I know he's got my back every day. It's a pleasure to work with Tom. His integrity is outstanding. His work ethic is amazing, and I'm learning a lot in that office. So it's a real privilege to work with Tom, and I think he really deserves the Braveheart Award because he very bravely fights for our veterans with all of his heart every day in the office. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Should we go and get that?
Yes.
He's still giving orders, huh?
This is not just a small item, is it?
You'd get a heck of a carrying permit for that.
Beautiful.
Beautiful.
Why don't you turn it around so the people out there can see it as well?
Tom, it's my pleasure to represent veterans of Clay County and give you this award for all your hard work.
Well, thank you, all of you, for coming. There are so many dignitaries, family, friends, veterans out there that came here today for this, and thank you for this beautiful award and the words that you said. You've truly honored me today, and I so appreciate it. And, you know, in two thousand and... And, you know, in 2006, Clay County gave me the opportunity, they gave me the charge and the trust of overseeing all the veterans in Clay County. And every single day, I have never forgotten that, and I've never taken it lightly, and I'll continue that until my last day here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And thank all of you for coming for this. You can't turn in a per diem for this.
Are you sure?
Yeah. Okay. We're five minutes early. Is that okay? Or do you think anybody?
I think that's okay for this.
Okay. Brian, you want to?
Sure. Several things for the Highway Department here. Our engineer and assistant are out of town, so.
That's right. They're all trained, so we'll.
So Brian Berg is going to pretend he's an engineer?
No, no, no. We're going to try and get some money out of you. Don't need to be an engineer for that. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The first item we have on our agenda, and Brian is here, that does know the equipment and what the needs are, Brian Fredericksen, so we, the first item on the replacement is a replacement for Nathan's vehicle. He has a 2005 Jeep Grand Cherokee right now, and he's asking for the replacement of that. That's the first unit. And you'll see on your second page that that is listed out where they've received three bids, and they're recommending the lowest bid for $26,245 for a Ford SUV. And you want to just approve them all at the same time, Mr. Chair?
Well, we can do one. I think we should do one at a time.
Since you're on such a fun stage. If you would, I'd ask.
Any questions on this one?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the replacement. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carried. Okay, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then on the backside of that same form, you will see 2014 Highway Department equipment replacements. And, well, Mr. Chair, I guess you were in Highway Committee, and we did go over these in detail because there is some switching out, and we'd asked Brian, I was hoping to talk a little bit about the needs. I think it's important, even though we understand the needs, to discuss what they have in mind for switching out some of these equipments.
Right now, basically, we have one piece of equipment that was purchased several years ago when the county was into doing some chip sealing, and it's a distributor truck, and we're asking that we could trade that in and get a DuraPatcher, which is a spray patching machine that I'm sure you've seen most of the other municipalities start to use, you know, for patching potholes. It makes the temporary patching, like cold mix, almost obsolete. You can use it down to twenty degrees, and it's a lot easier for the maintenance personnel to use than cold mix or traditional asphalt patching. That one, excuse me, would be a very good maintenance thing to have. I know in the past couple of years, they've actually hired a contractor to do that and spent thirty thousand dollars a year just for the contract. If we had our own, we could basically use it whenever we needed and save some money that way. Our forces have been hauling the materials for the contractor also, so that would be another thing that basically we're doing right now that would be a cost savings to us. Did you want to just do each?
Yeah, why don't you go through this whole list? If there's something that we want to do separately, we can pull it out, but otherwise we can do them all together.
Okay. And then the second item would be a crack filling machine. It melts down the crack filler, and a lot of the roads around the county have not been crack filled for several years now, and it's preventative maintenance to, you know, extend the life of the pavement and provide a better service for the county taxpayers. And then another piece of equipment that we're asking for would be the, a new tack wagon to replace a tack wagon that we have. Basically, that equipment is used before an asphalt overlay is done. You would use it to spray down the tack to let the new overlay adhere better. The one that's currently owned by the county does not have the process to be able to pull the material out of the wand and put it back in the tank. You actually have to discharge the material and basically waste the material to clean out the hose, and it's a process that's kind of involved, and then you have wasted material and you actually flush with diesel, so it ends up being an environmental concern also. This new one, you can return the material to the tank, thereby not waste the material or causing an environmental hazard. And the last items on there would be two additional walk-and-roll packers that attach to the back of the road graders for the gravel road maintenance. County owns nine of them now, but we have eleven motor graders and eleven motor grader operators. So two of them are sharing right now, and when they're sharing, the one doesn't have them. So they make quite a difference on the gravel roads, and at the township meetings, several of the supervisors have been asking if we have one for everybody now, because it really does seem to make quite a difference on the maintenance of the gravel.
Very good. Thank you.
The other, Brian? Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say.
Brian, Brian, and Brian.
Well, you have three people, and they're all Brian. Boy, you can't ask for much better quality than that.
I really didn't. You know, I guess for the equipment.
Well, Mr. Chair, just to follow along on that, if you look at the totals down below, there is approximately $122,800 in the ISF Fund, in the Internal Service Fund that stands for, and the trades for about $32,000, and you'll see the bid prices there. So the difference is about $142,700 we're asking you to purchase today, and as I indicated, there's $122,000 in the Internal Service Fund. That leaves a balance of about $19,800. Lori did not feel that there would be a problem of spending that for the purchase of this. And if I just, as one small example, I refer you back to the SUV that you authorized purchasing. There was $27,000 in the Internal Service Fund, and we're only spending $20,000 of that $900, about $21,000 out of that. So that's going to make up some of the difference in the fund itself. So Lori felt it was very safe to go ahead and make these purchases.
All right, and the Highway Tracking Committee also recommends that we go ahead with this. We had discussed possibly only doing one of the walk-and-roll packers, but since we're missing two, we just seems like it's, we should do, we should finish it up and get them all with that equipment.
Right. And I think the Highway Department also felt that there was some efficiencies in those walk-and-rollers that go behind, it's, you know, you might reduce the time that you have to go over those. It might reduce it by one, once or something, and that saves money in the process as well.
So there's money in the Internal Service Fund, it's simply there's not, it's, there's not, there's nineteen thousand short in this category for these items.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we understand that we're recommending this whole, this whole list of replacements? One of the things that, that it seems to me is really helpful with this stuff is that we're, with this equipment, we can do a lot more of our own repairs. And as you remember on the five-year plan, after we get through the first three years, there's less, less construction money available, and this would give us, and we'd have people with time to do these kinds of repairs that we probably wouldn't have now. So it'd be, it'd be important to do it, I think, and to have the equipment we need, so.
I just, that last column is a state bid with tax. We don't pay taxes anymore, do we? Not just the column that has been updated, or do we pay taxes?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, that is a labeling, because some we do pay tax on, some we don't. Anything that carries a license plate, such as a trailer or something, would require tax, and I'm not sure that there's any in this list that do carry tax. Some may or some may not.
The trailers, we're not sure.
There are some trailers in there.
The tees don't have to.
Yeah, the rollers wouldn't, but the rest would. So it's inclusive of the tax, so.
Okay.
That's the separation of it, though. If it carries a license plate on it, even if it's a trailer, it's required to pay the tax, and if it's, if it's not, like the road graders, we wouldn't pay, but a truck, we would.
Oh, okay.
I'm moved to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this list of replacement equipment. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next Consulting Services.
Yes, Mr. Chair, on the second item there, I don't want to say I know a little more about this, but Dave and I have consulted two, three times on this. We brought this also to the, to the Tracking Committee, and the federal government has projected Tiger Grants in the arena of $600 million, and $120,000 of those are set aside for rural projects. And the commissioners certainly know here that we want to finish the Highway 52 going south, and that is ready to go, it's designed. We've looked at finding money for that, and we plan to get that done. We feel it's a real prime candidate for the Tiger Grant. And what we're asking for in item number two is some consulting services. We, Barb Rody from Washington, DC, has worked with us in the past. She is not under contract or employment with us at this time, but we're asking the board to approve $12,000 to ask her to assist us with getting, applying, and following through on that grant. And frankly, the agreement, we did talk about, and I don't see the agreement in front of us, and that'll be brought back, I guess. It's more of a letter of agreement. We'll have to work with Jenny on the final agreement. But we want to know what the board felt of going forward and hiring her to assist us for the next six months in applying and obtaining that grant, and then there might be a bonus involved if we are successful in getting it, and that's the way we're kind of approaching it this time.
Okay, it's a six-month contract for $12,000 plus a possible bonus at the end if we're successful. It seems to me that it's a project that we've dealt with before, and Barb is very familiar with the, with the project and that she could do a good job for us in doing some lobbying in Washington, so that's where, what our goal is. And it's recommended by the, by the committee to approve this contract. What are your wishes?
Well, maybe, Oliver, move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Consulting Service contract with Barb Rody. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carried. All right, thank you. Next is the letter of support to, for the Tiger Grant.
The motion that you just made, so.
Well, no, it's in the letter.
Yes, the letter's attached.
Oh, okay. But we did, the contract we just did, we haven't done, we haven't.
No, no, you haven't. I was just saying that.
Oh, for that project.
What the action you just took, this is action to support.
That's right.
The Tiger.
See the letter before you? It's written to the Secretary of U.S. Department of Transportation, signed by our chair, Kevin. And is there approval to send this letter?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to send this letter to the, to the Commissioner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Brian, Brian, and Brian. Okay, next item, 9:15, so we're right on schedule with that. Jenny, our Assistant County Attorney, Jenny is, is this, with initiating the process to acquire land for a road project.
Yes, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
To start out, in your packets, the initial requested action in this matter was for two resolutions pertaining to two parcels of property. Before the board meeting, the Highway Department has been able to resolve one of those two issues. So I would ask that the board remove the piece of this request that pertains to A-Struck Farms, as that's no longer in controversy. They've signed a deed to the county, and that transfer should go through smoothly, but we still have the one remaining parcel, and that is a parcel of land that is owned by, let me just get the names correct, Michael A. Purt, Linda A. Purt, and Reimer's Land Legacy LLC. So if we could just go forward on that piece of the request.
Okay.
The whole issue before the board today revolves around the State Highway 18 Reconstruction Project that's been designed, and bids have gone out on that. We opened the bids, I believe, last week. Has not been awarded yet, but of course, in order to regrade and improve that highway, there is going to be an expansion or a widening of the road, and for that 5.3 miles of reconstruction, there's many parcels of land that need to be acquired, at least the right-of-way along that highway. And so that was quite an endeavor in itself. There's lots of different parcels, many different landowners. Dave and Nathan have worked, and myself, we've worked on transfers of many of those pieces and gaining rights of way. However, as we sit here today, there was one parcel of property that we are not able to, we were not able to negotiate and come to an agreement on. And if you are familiar with the legal concept of eminent domain, a public taking for a necessity, there is an equivalent to that in the Highway Department statutes. That's Section 163 of Minnesota statutes. It provides a specific remedy for a county because of highway construction to gain property. So rather than going through an eminent domain type of proceeding in the court, we can use this 163 in the Highway Chapter. It's an alternative procedure for acquisition of property. And certainly, we would not come to you and request this alternative procedure if we didn't believe that the other options for acquiring this right-of-way had been exhausted. But we are at, we're at kind of an impasse, and we also believe that now is the time to go forward with this procedure, because time is really of the essence. We would like to award that bid. We would like to get started on the construction here when the weather permits. And so we are asking the board to, I've attached a sample resolution, but basically, the action requested today is simply that you approve. requested today is simply that you approve the resolution saying that these lands, or this land is needed for the particular highway project, and that you agree that we should start the process of acquisition that's outlined in the Minnesota statutes for highway construction. I've also attached a sheet with six, six numbers on it. I, I drew this up simply because, in my own head, I needed to understand what the process is, because this is not something that I've ever done for the county before. But we're at step number one. I'm asking you to pass the resolution. And you can see how this process will proceed. If you grant the requested action, we would have to submit a petition to the District Court. We would have to present some evidence to the District Court. And then if the District Court would approve such, it would come back to the board, and the board would then set the amount of compensation for the landowner. So it's just kind of the very beginning of this process. I, I have never assisted the, the county with this process, but it's not foreign to the county. I spoke with Judge Michelle Lawson, who used to be the Assistant Civil Chief, and she said in, in times past that she had done this for the board as well. So we know that it's a viable option. And again, it's really what we're left with at this point, not being able to strike a deal with this particular landowner. So I would ask the board to approve the resolution. I believe it's the first resolution in the packet pertaining to the land.
The fifth sheet of paper, I think, in the, in the packet.
Yes. It's in the, it's the, if you look at Attachment A, the, the specific property in question here is the south 65 feet of the east half of Section 27, Township 140 north, range 48 west of the fifth principal meridian, Clay County, Minnesota, less the county road 95 right-of-way. That's the legal description of this right-of-way that we're, it's essentially 65 feet.
Okay, all right. So you see the, the process there, listed in the back of the first, first page, and this is the first step of that process.
That's correct.
Is it, what's the issue? The compensation? Is that what the problem is, or?
No, that, I believe the problem from speaking with Nathan from the Highway Department is that the landowner does not want to sign a warranty deed. He would sign a quitclaim deed, as I understand it, but without knowing the ownership interest that he possesses, a quitclaim deed is not the security that the county would need to do major road improvement, and would want to have more than a quitclaim deed. And so he's not willing. I don't believe he objected to the compensation that was put forward, or objects to the project. But it was really just, we couldn't get past the warranty deed versus the quitclaim deed. And the county just needs to have more security. We can't take quitclaim deeds for these kinds of projects, so.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, motion, move the resolution?
Yes.
That's before us?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Brian here?
And Mr. Chair, as you serve on Highway Committee, this was not necessarily discussed, this procedure in Highway Committee, but I did visit with Commissioner Campbell, who is also on the Highway Committee, just for the other commissioners, and, and he supports this process, so.
Okay. One of the reasons we, we need to act as quickly as possible on this is the, we've already, already had received the bids on it, and we have just 60 days to.
Yes.
To clear up all of the, the property issues, so, or the bid has to be redone. So we definitely want to get this project underway.
And we believe that if, if this procedure begins today with the board, we could clear up that issue before the 60 days.
Very good, okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post a nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay, next is County Auditor, Lori Johnson. You have two things. I understand one of your things is going to be postponed as well.
Correct. I just received word yesterday, or I was looking over, over the letter that Glendon had sent, and just verifying the numbers, and, and I looked, and the, the amount that they actually have due is $5,000. But when they were looking at the website, they thought it was only $1,000. So they asked would that be pulled so they could revisit this with their counsel to, to see if they actually wanted to make that request. So pulling that pull.
Thank you. We'll pull that one.
And then the second one is actually a request to waive the penalty and interest on a delinquent tax, and it was only a day late. And if you read the letter, there were some significant health problems and issues that happened, so I would recommend that we waive that.
I'll move to waive penalty.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to waive the penalty because of health, health issues in this situation. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post a nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, you let her off easy.
That was easy, yeah.
Pardon me.
Okay, committee reports. Frank, do you have a?
Last Thursday, I went through the Salt and Water Conservation District. We had some discussion, some more discussion on that feedlot thing. They're having some problems with the feedlot inspection program and trying to get that clarified. They're supposed to, the normal thing is to do about seven feedlots, and the state sort of like them to do around 15 of them, so they're having some discussion as far as time and stuff, how much time, whether they can get them done or not. So that's, took up some of the discussion. Rest is pretty much routine stuff that they discussed as far as what's going on there. And I think they thanked us for proving their wheat, our contribution to their noxious wheat, getting rid of that. I think we gave them around $16,000 a year, something like that, so they thanked us for Other things, I've attended, Saturday, Senator Kenny Eakin and Paul Markward, Representative Paul Markward and Ben Lean at the Moore Library, and they gave a presentation. They have a whole town hall meetings, and I've been attending quite a few of the town hall meetings, just to see what's going on in the state and stuff like that. And they, you know, Morehead, I think they had around 50 people in attendance, and it's a good, good crowd there and stuff, and good questions. They talked a lot about, you know, the minimum wage, how it's going to affect Minnesota, and anti-bolting, bonding bill, school things, and affordable housing. And a lot of, a lot of bills that are being passed this year, how they're going to affect the people in Clay County. And yesterday, they were at Holly and Dilworth and Glendon, and I attended those meetings with them too. And they had good turnout at all the places. Also, yesterday, Senator Al Franken had a press conference that was at, at the Moore Center Mall, and he was talking about rail, you know, he's here on rail safety and stuff like that. And Morehead was there, I mean, Morehead, Mayor and stuff like that. And I was just wondering, what is our, I know Brian Green's working on this too, you know. I was wondering why weren't we involved in that, or something like that? Was he here for, just for Morehead, or is Clay County involved in that too, or?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, I had the same question.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll let you ask the question.
No, no. You know what I'm saying.
You know, I, I mean, I realize Morehead's in Clay County, I mean, the, the trains don't stop at Morehead, you know? They keep going through all of Clay County, and I was just sort of, should we be involved in it or not? And I think Brian is involved in it. I'm not saying he's not involved in it, you know, but it just seemed like it was just a concern about the trains in Morehead yesterday.
Well, and obviously, if there's a, an accident, if there's a disaster, it's a, you know, we are definitely involved.
Yes.
So, okay. Good question.
Okay, that's all my stuff.
Okay, Grant?
I just had one thing. We had a short MRCC meeting on, we're continuing to work and lobby for more transportation funding for the roads this year. I think it's a slow, difficult process, but we're still hopeful there'll be some changes, so that's it.
Okay. Highway Tracking, after the meeting last week, and we've discussed most of those things that we talked about at that meeting, they've, they've been on the agenda here today, so. Also, last week, I, I had a Communications Committee meeting with, with the Basin Commission, reviewing last year's, or this year's event, annual summit conference, and beginning to talk about next year's. So that went well, was a good, good report about this year's, this year's meeting. Also, had Land Management meeting, a very short meeting this time, and it is pretty much routine business. Lists again of the houses that are being appraised now in the, in the Oxbow and Fargo, Fargo area as well, for different properties that are being, being appraised for the diversion project. So, but it was pretty routine stuff that we talked about there. I attended a webinar on Friday for extension training for, for chairs and vice chairs of extension committees. And, you know, Frank couldn't, couldn't be there, but it was, it was interesting information that they shared with us. And we can, we can share some of that with you, Frank. The, let me see. I guess that's it. That's all I had this, this week, so. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a little update on the, on the Department of Motor Vehicle. We plan to cross over from one side to the other on April 26th, which is only a week and a half away. And I've been working with the Highway Department on some temporary surface, surface out on the west side. That's where the snow was piled, and it's pretty wet over there. And, but we will need to close down the east side, because we're going to be using a west side entrance in a week and a half into motor vehicles. So we'll get some signing, we'll block off that east entrance. And it'll be a little tight for a while, but I think the, the changes are going to work out real well. We're making accommodations for the handicap parking and things on the entrance to that west side too, so we'll, we'll certainly be working with that. And also, Burns and Associates Architect is working with the Highway Department on the front entrance. We want to get that parking lot paved as well, plus the curb and gutter that leads up to the main entrance. There will be a change on that. There will be a change order coming, because part of the curb and gutter that is being done on the entrance will be done as, as an extension of the project itself, and then highway will probably be, might be a separate project, or they might attach it to another project that they going, have going on on Levin Street as well. So they're talking with their, their contractors. So that'll be brought forward for any changes that, that may be needed in, in dollars. And there, there will be some, certainly dollars on there. And also, Robbie has secured prices, and maybe if you noticed, they started yesterday on the minimum security facility over here, and the garage, if you've noticed some activity over there. He's working with the STS crew out of Alexandria to do the, to do the work there. And then, of course, we bought the shingles. So that was pretty reasonably priced. I think the whole project is around $14,000 that he's, that he's working on, so that was a positive thing. Highway Tracking's already been addressed. One of my difficult assignments this last week is, is Vicki's evaluation. And thank you for all your input on, on that. That was a little humor, Vicki.
Very little.
But just to let you know, on your behalf, if she does get evaluated, I do appreciate your feedback, feedback and input on that. We did have a meeting in regards to the diversion on flow easements and where that is going as it progresses. That is, you've seen more of that in the, the discussion in the paper about how you're going to establish a payment for water, if water has to be stored on there for a short period of time, and how that's going to be established. I did attend the Morehead, I was asked to present at the Morehead Business Association last Wednesday morning, and I think that went okay. We talked a lot about fund balances. I took along our fund balances and why we need them, and how we establish budgets. And Nancy Gunderson went along with me, because we had forwarded some information on valuations, on business valuations, and we really didn't get time for that, so they may invite her back just to talk about commercial valuations. We did have a construction meeting, and I kind of covered that with a DMV update. At the Chamber of Commerce, I'm on the Public Affairs Committee, and we did have a presentation from Mike Redlinger and Scott Hutchins, reference legislative priorities in Minnesota. And I do have copies of that, and maybe I'll give you, there's just a couple I want to bring to your attention on that. And I know you folks are also getting the updates from Representative Lean and Representative Markort, I think, sending them out as well. But just a couple on here. They talk about the flood mitigation funding. They're looking for $7.2 million. They feel they've made some progress in regards to, that would finish up all of Morehead, and they'd be very pleased on that. Another thing that was kind of interesting, it's the second item down there on the deed statewide study. They're looking at $150,000 to $250,000 from deed to study the effects of the oil production in North Dakota on outstate Minnesota. And I think that might be, I mean, you can study things to death, but sometimes it's okay to take a look and see what kind of positive business reactions we're having in northern Minnesota to the oil emphasis in Minnesota, or in North Dakota. The, the, you know, the transportation is the obvious one with all the oil going through the state. But there's a lot of jobs that are being created out there and, for Minnesotans. And I think it's important that the state is going ahead and planning on, and I think it sounded pretty positive that the, this study would, would be done. I think that would be really helpful for Minnesota, especially the border cities. And if you go through this just a little bit, the one, I think, another point that is quite interesting, is they're looking at reducing the business tax. In the last session, it was, I've got that on the back page. There is legislation introduced to reduce now the 1.9 tax to, down to 1.7. And that's a disparity credit tax, that the fact that we're along the North Dakota border, and we're trying to even that playing field. And there was some talk to even lower that down to 1.5, because it's, it's showing that that would be more of a competitive nature for the businesses. So that would be a real positive thing for, for the businesses that are within certain miles. And I think in our county, it affects, what, Dilworth and then west from there. I don't think by any sort of falls within that disparity tax, and I know Holly doesn't, so. Anyway, that was pretty interesting. Land Management, Commissioner Everett already covered that. And after the Land Management meeting, we had the, the division meeting. There, things are slowing down a little bit until they get some of the funding arranged. There's lots of land movement, but as was passed out there, there's going to be some closings very soon. But they've suspended buying properties that come up for sale, meaning land down there, farmland. They were purchasing some of that, but until they get some funding sources in place. So that's moving a little bit slower. And Rhonda and Lori, and I, and Susan Rowe from Lori's office met a couple days ago in regards to, or maybe it was yesterday, in regards to, Rhonda had gone over to Becker County to talk to them about their social service needs and things, and, and we'd like to meet with you after the meeting, if that's possible. And then just a couple things from last week. Rhonda, with Social Services, is very close to having a, a presentation on the MA mileage issue, and I think Commissioner Everett and Commissioner Gross also attended that luncheon, and that was addressed, about that medical assistance mileage. And she's making some progress on that. Also, last week, you passed an increase in the fees for testing, the $250 fee for testing of, of materials that's brought to the landfill, whether they can take it or not. And I visited with Kirk. He's got a good plan for notifying, he's sending a letter out to the main haulers, there's, there's probably 15 of them. We'll stretch out to any hauler that we possibly bring. We'll be posting it at the landfill out there. So we'll certainly get, make every attempt to get that out. And I think. And I think that was about the follow-up questions, I think. So, Mr. Chair, with that, I conclude my report.
Okay, anything else? Anybody?
I was just going to say, you were at the Moore Business Association, and Chuck Chadwick told me to pass on, you did a good job.
Oh.
Appreciate you being there.
Okay, we have our public health meetings at noon today, 11:30, in the Eagles in Barnesville. And so hopefully, we can, the three of us can be there, since the other two can't be. Anything, Vicki, that you have?
No, thank you.
Darren, anything? So if there's no further business, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.